I've not shown seven yet.
Oh, I got six fifty-six.
I got six fifty-nine.
Well, why is mine three minutes slower than yours?
I'm going off my phone. I got seven now.
Okay. We'll call it seven. It's 7:00 PM, July 5th. Bucyrus City Council meeting, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on call.
McKeever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
Sherrick?
Here.
Spiegel?
Here.
Young?
Here.
All right. Before you, you have the minutes of the June 21st, 2022, regular meeting and the June 23rd, special council meeting minutes. Anybody have any corrections, additions? If not, may I have a motion and a second? For the June 21st, 2022?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for the June 23rd, 2022, special council meeting.
I'll make a motion to second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak?
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrs. My first topic has to do with the public hearing notice for August 1st, 2022. Per Ohio Revised Code 71312, a public hearing notice is required to be published one time in a newspaper of general circulation in the municipal corporation. A public hearing notice for August 1st, 2022 was published two times in the telegraph form, on June 28th and July 5th. A double publication of the notice was also done on June 28th and on July 5th. Assuming that the double publications were done in air by the telegraph form, the city needs to ensure that they are not billed for them. I urge the city to make sure they are publishing notices the required number of times only to ensure that taxpayer dollars are being spent wisely. Finally, I find that there has been no placement of the August 1st, 2022, public hearing notice on the documents of demand event calendar, zoning department or council department websites alerting the public of the upcoming hearing. Topic two. At the June 9th, 2022, Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting, Chairperson, or excuse me, Councilperson Wireball questioned Service Safety Director Wagner on the status of the bids for the Splash Pad at All Miller Park. Wagner responded that he had not seen anything come in, but he would check and send out an email. On June 11th, 2022, I sent an email to council setting forth my research on the matter. Emergency legislation to advertise for bids was requested by the Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Resolution Number 205, 2022, advertising for bids was approved by council. The February 15th, 2022, council minute set forth mayor resource report that the bids would be opened March 9, 2022. A legal notice advertising for bids was published in the telegraph form three consecutive weeks, rather than only the required two consecutive weeks. An email response from interim law director Gurnett stated that the running of the notice for the third consecutive week was done in air by him. In my review of various documents, I find that the Splash Park has also been referred to as the Splash Pad. At the June 23rd, 2022, council meeting, the mayor stated that the Splash Park at All Miller would go out to bid fairly soon. My question is, what happened to the March 9th, 2022, opening of bids? But before that question is answered, topic number three, so I stay within my three minutes, All Miller Park Pool. Today, the city of Bucyrs posted on their Facebook page a notice stating All Miller Park Pool is closed due to lack of patrons. My question is, how many patrons does the city require in order for the pool to be open? So, question number one. I'm assuming that would go...
I can answer that.
Oh, okay.
I actually, John and I had discussed this, John, Rostache, and we ended up calling Brian because John thought it was once, but Brian told us we had to run it twice.
Now, we're talking about...
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing.
You said it had to be ran twice. I was trying to find, he texted me, but I was trying to find that, well, that wasn't being rude, I'm sorry. The only thing I can pop up, because I think he ended up calling me, the only thing I can see here, he said, the code says you have to publish unless it specifically says once or a different amount, it's twice, is what he told me. So, I was told it had to run twice by Brian.
And if that's the case, then I guess I would question then why Brian did not have the April 7th, 2022, public hearing notice done twice or the March 1st, 2022, public hearing done twice? Because it was, those were just ran once. And like I say, the Ohio Revised Code section says, "Before any ordinance, measure, regulation, or amendments thereto, inclusive other revised code, may be passed, legislative authority of the municipal corporation shall hold a public hearing thereon and shall give at least 30 days' notice of the time and place thereof in a newspaper of general circulation in the municipal corporation." And I have checked past ones, previous years, and it's just been the one time. But anyhow, I'm just bringing that to your attention. Because again, you know, we're talking about how money, you know, we're trying to preserve our money, and by doing all these additional publications that we're not required to do, we're using, or paying out money that, you know, we don't need to. Secondly, then, on the All Miller Splash Park, I guess that question would go to the mayor on what happened to the May, or March 9th, bid opening?
That was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn, okay. And then lastly, how many patrons does the city require in order for the pool to be open?
I can ask the service director. I think there was probably less than 10 today. I'm not 100% sure if there's a... I think it was, I think it was 10. But I'll find out and ask the service director what the policy is.
And I guess then, to further that question, if I may, is that, let's just use the number 10 hypothetically. Does that mean there need to be 10 people right there when we open? And then what happens if later on, you're down to three? Are you then closing the park or closing the pool?
I think, I'll take a response. I know today in the conversation, there weren't very many people in the park, in the pool today. And the conversation with the pool manager went and, you know, if people, if more people get there, let them know if there isn't enough, we'll be closing it. I think we closed at 5:00 today, I believe. I think that was the plan. So, everybody got, if they came late, they would get at least a couple hours swimming in today.
You closed today at 5:00, the pool?
I think it was.
It was on Facebook much earlier.
Did it say that it will be closing earlier?
Let's look here real quick.
I mean, the talk this morning, when I heard, or read we opened at noon, there was only a few people.
Because when, the Facebook post for the, the city of Bucyrs, Facebook post states four hours, and when I saw it, it had four hours.
So, it was shortly after 1:00?
That's what I thought, 1:25 PM is what I figured that it closed.
And it said that the pool is closed.
Yeah, so it closed it.
Okay, well, I don't micromanage the pool, so I'm sorry. I don't, I don't, I'm not on Facebook all the time either, so. So, I guess, what's your point? What point are you making?
It wasn't a point, it was a question.
What was your question?
What constitutes a lack of patrons?
Yeah. The Facebook post says, "All Miller Park Pool is closed due to lack of patrons." So, my question was, how many patrons does the city require in order for the pool to be open?
I don't know, but it's, it's not unusual for the pool to close early for lack of patrons. First time this question's ever come up, so I can find out.
We'll find out. Okay, thank you. Yes.
So, I have another question. It's not me being argumentative, but as somebody with a family that it's quite an undertaking to take three children to the pool, it becomes a whole day activity. If the pool does close early, are those people refunded? Are they given a warning? Are they kicked out at 1:00 if the pool closes? Or do they allow those people to spend the rest of their time there that they paid for, or how does that work?
We can, I can get back with you.
I actually have a question about that, too. Like, today, it was storming in the morning. And if you close by 1:00, I mean, what about the people who waited until it dried up and were going to go out after lunch? I mean, yeah, that, it just, I, yeah, that didn't really sit right with me. Sorry.
But on the other hand, if it's three people in the pool and we have four lifeguards, you know, it's, and if there's still three people at 1:00, you know, the traditional time is open. They may, you know, we also have to be careful with city funds that we use. So, I don't know, I thought it was closing later than that. I'll, I'll talk to Jeff tomorrow, we can send something out there.
Thank you. All right, moving on to communications and petitions.
Okay, so, we actually have three. One, I got later, so it's not on here. But the first one is from the Bucyrs Public Library. It says, "Dear City Council Members, Bucyrs Public Library Board of Trustees has received the resignation of Hannah Jacobs, whose term will expire December 31st, 2022. We would like the approval of Bucyrs City Council to appoint Colton Young to fill this vacancy. And according to Kevin, this is effective immediately."
Yeah, it says here that there's a vacancy.
All righty, and the next one is actually the pool hours. So, one second here. So, it says, "Dear council members, as a courtesy to you and for your awareness, the administration would like to provide you with the following public notice. To better serve our community with excellence and to maximize the availability of the pool for public use, we have adjusted the municipal pool hours..." Okay, well, this is on Monday. Sorry, that one actually, I don't think we need to read because that was for Monday. It must have came in my box. I'm sorry, that was my box. The last one is from Brian Rockwell. "This is just a friendly reminder that we are still needing a signed resolution from each of you attached to the draft for the Solid Waste Management Plan update for the period of 2023 through 2037. Please email or mail a resolution to us accepting or denying this plan." And then he said, "If you have any questions." He listed his phone number.
Okay, so the Bucyrs Public Library Board of Trustees needs to be referred to Economic Development. May I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the Solid Waste Plan needs to be referred to Service.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It was Kevin. Kevin, were you first on the library?
Both, yes.
All right, standing committee reports. Plating.
Nothing other than waiting for the public hearing at the moment.
Public Lands and Buildings?
I have nothing at this time.
Yeah, I know, nothing happened there. Nothing happened.
Health and Safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic Development?
I have nothing to report.
Service?
No report.
Traffic Commission?
Nothing to report.
Since there is nothing reported, we do not need to accept, so. Report of city officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Hope everyone had a wonderful celebration last weekend, a nation's birthday. And as you well know, many of you were probably downtown for the activities this weekend. Concert at Shine's Art Park on Thursday night. Baker 47, they were excellent, nice crowd down there. First Friday, had another nice crowd. And following, after that, we had a decent crowd for the movie, Elaborate. Thanks to John for putting that on. And First Dora Event was held on that same first Friday. Everyone seemed to have positive statements about it. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we are the 103rd Dora, official Dora City in the state of Ohio. And we want to congratulate and thank Jessie Ferner, who finished her tenure at Bucyrs Chamber of Commerce, has a Bucyrs Chamber of Commerce Director last week. But many, many skills to the job. She was a very enthusiastic supporter of the city, which I think was contagious. And we have been fortunate to have a long line of capable Chamber of Commerce Directors. And I hope our new person, I have faith that Avery Richardson will be the same. And I think you all got, maybe saw the press release that came late today about that. Thanks to all of you who participated, donated, and organized the annual South of the Square Rally, which is held at Shine's Art Park on June 24th. The beneficiary of this year's efforts is the Bucyrs Backpack Program. Melissa Miller was the driving force behind the organization. She is from Mitsick Miller &amp; Associates. And she let me know last week that they raised over $4,500 so far, so. Thank everybody for that. So, that's it for my report.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Safety Service Director.
For Mr. Wagner's report, Marquane's Construction Project will start tomorrow. And I think they've already moved the equipment in. The path along the, the path along Oathway will remain closed for duration. Estimated time on that, depending on the weather, should be about a week. Arrowhead Drive issue had some equipment issues, and there's been some delays there. Most of those curbs are having to be hand-formed, which slows it down. And so, but they are working away on it. Bucyrs Road Materials will be back in town this week, and they will complete what has already been milled. And the wastewater treatment plant, excuse me, the water treatment plant, air conditioning and heating unit will be going out to bid soon. And we will open up the bids on Tuesday, July 19th, at 2:00 PM. We are, we'll be hiring an access coordinator, working on an ad for this, and that should be posted this week. And if you want to fill out an application, come to the mayor's office. And there will also be availability on the city website, as well as qualifications that we're looking for. The popular street bridge, Mary Street Extension part there. Construction company is, will be planning to finish up this week, depending on the weather. Again, rain is delayed down. They also got called off for an emergency project, and it took a little longer than what we had hoped, but hopefully everything will be back by the end of the week. And regarding budgets, we are reviewing all department revenues to see where we'll be able to cut expenses off the budgets for the last six months. This will allow us to see where we will have to adjust expenses. We are starting out with gas and oil. As you know, it's going up, although it's kind of on the downhill slide right now, and we hope that continues. It's, in most departments, we are exceeding our six-month budget plan. And we also met with Dylan Wyatt of McKeever &amp; Associates to see if we may be able to move some street projects to next year. So, just watching everything very closely. And that's Jess's report.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I had a question.
Sure.
Between you and Jeff, I know everything's costing a lot more, and you mentioned right here, we might have to move some projects, street projects back. Have we explored the federal funding that is out there? The IIJA funding?
Looking at everything, there's also supposed to be more, additional funding coming down here this fall. That typically isn't for streets, though. What I've seen, though, that's for infrastructure, like sewer, water, broadband, those types of things.
Broadband, there's a whole list. If you go to Senator Portman's webpage, he has a very good explanation of it.
We're looking at every avenue for...
Okay, I just don't want to wait around and then it'll all be gone, you know? I know it's like 1.2 trillion, but it don't last long.
Not in 50 states, so. Yeah, and thank you for sending me an email on it, too. I appreciate that. Feel free to do that anytime.
Oh, you know I do.
I appreciate it, I do.
I know.
I've told you that.
All right, we do not have a law director's report. You have before you reports from Ms. Schiffer, monthly comparisons and the tally to budget. She does have referrals. She says, "I need to refer an appropriation, a general fund for donations made to the police department in the amount of $1,945.36. The donation came through the community foundation in the amount of $1,695.36. And a donation was received from the Rotary in the amount of $250, both for Safety Town. This should be in committee already, as I referred to previously. I also need to refer various appropriations and transfer for covering increased costs of gas and oil and equipment repair and maintenance in several departments. So, Safety Service Director Wagner is reviewing these lines for me to determine exactly what we will need. The Parks Department also needs additional funds in the insurance line as we are splitting costs differently for the three employees that are split between Solid Waste and Parks. I will have a breakdown for Thursday's meeting in finance." Do we have those breakdowns from Mr. Wagner yet? All right, so I guess we don't have any referrals.
Well, we need to refer this.
I'll make a refer, I will make a motion to refer the appropriations and transfers.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mrs. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I should have said Ms., not Mrs. up there. It just came out.
Pardon me?
Yes.
So, I'm not sure, was that, when we said various appropriations, was that covering the donation up there? Or do we...
That was already...
Well, it's already been referred. Quite a while ago, wasn't it? Like, a month ago?
A month ago, yeah.
Yeah. Excuse me, sorry. Okay. Did we get anything from the treasurer?
We did not.
And you have the Police Chief's Monthly Report before you. Do you want me to read it? And did we get anything from the chief?
Excuse me, no, we did not.
All right. May I have a motion to accept the city officers' reports?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Visitors input regarding the reports of standing and special committees of the city officers. Seeing none, moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance number 27, 2022, amending and supplementing Section 1157.02 entitled Official Zoning District Map under Chapter 1157 entitled Zoning Districts and Zoning District Map under Title IX entitled Zoning Districts under Part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bucyrs by the redesignation of the property located at Red Oak Court, being the southern part of Crawford County Parcel, identification number 44001388100, from the Apartment Residential District into the Residential Estates District, and also the area of 510 North Sandusky, being Crawford County Parcel Identification Number 080018900001, and 080018899001 from the General Business District into the Downtown Business District.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I think we missed it. Should we just start with parcel identification? Should we read those numbers again? The second, go to the second group now.
You missed a few numbers when you were reading your parcel numbers.
Which, do you want me to read them all again?
510 North Sandusky?
510 North Sandusky being 08001890001, excuse me, 080018898000,
We have a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on the legislation that's been read for the first time.
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, ordinance number 27 dash 2022, deals with amending and supplementing codified ordinance Section 1157.02 entitled Official Zoning District Map for properties located at Red Oak Court and the area of 510 North Sandusky. A reminder that a public hearing is scheduled for August 1, 2022, for the redesignation of the properties identified above. A reminder that in late October, 2021, I informed council that a public hearing has to be held first before legislation can be considered by council because the purpose of the public hearing is for the public to come and express their concerns, ask questions, and possibly suggest changes to the proposed draft legislation. I spoke with Brian. He said, "We are able to read them, we just cannot pass them." Because this is available, readily available already in the office. So, if there are changes that need to be made at the public hearing, they will be made, but he said, as far as reading it goes, we can. We just can't pass it. We can't even vote on it.
Am I allowed to direct a question to John Rostache?
He says, yes.
Is that okay, John?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but remember when we had this issue back in October? And at that time, interim law director Gurnert was here, that what was done in the past, and maybe it's changed, you know, when I worked here, I would prepare a draft legislation. You would post it in the zoning office. There was no number assigned to the legislation.
I believe that to be correct.
Okay, but we're being told now by interim law director Gurnert, even though that's not what he did with the public hearing that was done back in October, he's now saying that we can assign a number and we can read it?
He did not, now, I will say, he did not say you could assign a number. That was my doing, because I, and it's just out of habit. So, if, I can remove the number. But no, he did not say assign the number, he said it can be read. But that, I mean, if that is, if that cannot be the number, I can make that not the number. Like, that's not an issue. I'm just out of habit, as soon as I get it and I know it's an ordinance, I just go down my list.
And, you know, you listen, you know, to your interim law director. I'm just giving you what we've done in the past, and I believe he's not correct. So, I'm just on the record that if anything happens down the line, I point it out to council that...
I just want to just make clear, though, the number, that was mine, my doing, that was not his doing, that was mine. That was my error, as far as the draft legislation goes.
Not an error when you're in the good habit of staying on top of it, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know which way this is going, but... I mean, I don't know which way this is going, but if we're, if this is the first reading, we're going to have to, it's going to have to be, have an ordinance number.
Yes.
So, we either, it's either the first reading or it's nothing, so, but I think the reason that he may be doing that is that by the time the, by the time the public hearing comes, then we can just pass it. We won't have to give it to the three readings.
And if for some reason we have to do it again, then we just would not use 27, because we've had that happen in the past where those numbers just get passed.
Yeah.
It happened in 2021, too, when I went through all of them.
I was just going to say, in lieu of having representation here tonight, we don't have a clear cut answer, and he is going to be here Thursday, and it would still be considered an open project. I think we probably need to address that in committee on Thursday to find out what is proper, what is not proper. Yeah. Yep, we brought it.
All right, consideration of legislation read for the second time.
Proposed ordinance number 26-2022, amending the traffic control map and file established by ordinance 2778 in sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bucyrs, Ohio, and adding additional signage, all as detailed herein.
Do I have a motion to accept this as a second reading?
So moved, second.
Who made the motion? I apologize.
Potter and my orders.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a motion by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
There's... She read it. You made the first.
Yeah, Potter was first, and Myers.
I apologize. All right. Any member of the general public present would like to make input or comments on the legislation read for a second time? Seeing none. Referring back to originating committee, proposed ordinance 26-2022, referring back to health and safety. Proposed ordinance 27-2022, which we don't know is an actual number, is referring back to plating. Committee report on pending legislation.
Health and safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 26-2022, the traffic amendment, traffic commission amendments and signage.
All right, and proposed ordinance 27-2022, which is in limbo, we will not address right now. Do we have any old or unfinished business? New or miscellaneous business? We have no one missing. We've got the two, three referrals. We have the library board to economic development, solid waste to service, and appropriations to finance. Anybody else have anything they want to add to referrals? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at, what is yours say?
7:30.
7:33.